Welcome to the meeting of the Wareboy Selectmen. It is a And the purpose of the work Seeds and dark eyes. The items. Fuel. Tool. And the And the last one. Trim them up a little Just Six. And the one-time purchase line. Will The year. Ed. We took that down by
But every You don't
Not, no. As of Eight million And now we are So. On that. Collect the bargain. A little bit more
The same
Correct. Which is actually the true statement.
Contract Twenty-four.
Able
Reflecting Twenty-three.
Alright. Yes.
Before you go any I did At the CBA. She said on Approval if the I don't know if you want to do She asked me if you
But just, I don't And not look but
I'm just, I want
To cue
What, um
Oh, the one, yeah. Right.
Did you run that by
Be up
Would play out No. I think Um, tonight, so Go to the fire department radios, well, pagers. Fifteen thousand dollars for how to replace approximately twenty-five aging pages and chargers. That's the same as we saw last week, so I'm gonna move
A little word different.
Oh, word is a little different.
I think I wrote the replacement of twenty-five and she said for the purchase of?
No, replacement.
Okay, then I had for the purchase of and she said
Maybe that was the next one, next one, next one was purchase of.
Okay.
Yep, alright, so I'll move that we recommend the pagers and chargers.
Second.
Move in second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, fire department utility vehicle, I think the verbiage changed for the purchase of one fully-equipped utility truck. Instead of probably a replacement. Money's the same, funds are the same, entertain motion.
I move we put this article forward.
Second, move in second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, police cruiser.
Now, the police cruiser, I You and I have had a conversation. After we talked about some of that ARPA money.
Yep.
We then got an email from the chief indicating that we may have a different Things may not go as planned, I guess.
With the radio system.
So, with that being this, the case, I still, I did throw some at it, but nothing like we talked about originally. So, I, I took thirty and put it there.
Okay.
That still leaves you two thirty-nine-nine For the rest.
In the ARPA?
In the ARPA, that we had over and above the regular money.
Right, and we were talking potentially, so the holdup is it was on the radios, what we're looking to do, we were looking to utilize current tower space on existing cellphone towers in town. And there is one company that is not, I'll say, playing nice with us. So, the option has potentially been to move to the East Ware Fire Station to establish a tower at the tune of about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So. Which was one of the original plans of the original Proposal.
So, what I did is I took the number and put thirty, so that the raise by taxation was forty-eight-ten.
Right.
That's different than what you saw.
You just said there's almost two forty.
There's two sixty-nine-nine in there, over and above what we already had the bid for six something. And we had talked about other monies going places. Like, we talked about the highway, we talked about that, we talked about the bridge, which, the bridge, we can, we're still hanging on to that. Cause we need that too. I just, this, the next article, I can explain where we got the highway money from, so.
Right.
Okay, so that, that, two forty includes a hundred we're taking for the bridge?
Nope, we're up to, we're up to the police still.
Okay.
Two sixty-nine.
So, we, you'll be down to, right, two thirty-nine-nine, you'll be down to two forty. If you take the thirty. You had two sixty-nine-nine.
Yep.
Minus thirty would be two thirty-nine-nine.
And you take a hundred for the bridge.
No, 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 you're in the wrong fund. You're, we're not going for the bridge for the ARPA.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, it was two forty left in that.
Right, and then we're talking, potentially talking another hundred and thirty out of that for the tower.
Right.
Project.
About a hundred thousand left.
Approximately, give or take.
And, and they may come back and say, sure, we'll do it, and then we're all set.
Yeah, I mean, we're still chatting back and forth, but we need to be prepared for
Oh, absolutely.
Right, so, that's why, it, it seemed like a slam dunk, but it seems like now there's a little bit of pushback, so.
Never is.
So, again, we just want to be prepared, in case we have to, so.
Okay, cause it, that'll be good with what's in the back of my mind for the rest of that ARPA money.
Okay. So, is the board comfortable with thirty on that one, to help offset it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the article for the police cruiser, using thirty thousand dollars of the ARPA money to offset the cost and impact to the taxpayer.
I'll second it, move in second, it all in favor?
Yes.
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 So, the ten-wheeler. If you remember back September twenty-sixth, we had a public hearing to accept the additional highway block grant money, and that's exactly what we have in money.
Yep.
So, and, we were thinking about ARPA and other things, but if you take a peek at what you have for money In your fund In the highway, in the highway
Equipment fund.
Highway equipment, you got twenty-two thousand, one eighty-eight.
Right.
So, if you take eighteen of it to make the two sixty, that's why It says to raise and appropriate the two forty-one, nine forty-one to be added to this.
To the fund, yep.
To buy one new and the money to come from the undesignated fund balance, but it represents The anticipated revenue received from the state as additional block grant per the Senate Bill four oh one.
Right.
So, it's cost you zero, because we already accepted that.
Right, we accepted that, those funds in.
Yep.
Right, so, okay, alright, so yeah, so it's a zero tax impact for that truck.
Good.
Any comments from the board members?
No.
Alright, I'll move that we accept the article as written for the ten-wheeler.
Second.
Move in second, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Government buildings, we discussed.
Yep.
So, I talked to Beth about it, the thirty thousand dollars is, will bring us to about fif-
Fifty-seven?
Yeah.
Fifty-three, actually.
Okay.
And in the fund balance, it was one point four eight five. So, this drops it down to one point five five, four five five.
Four five five, okay.
That's about as all as she really thought, because we don't know, a lot of that's unpaid taxes, but we also don't know what the revenues are gonna look like.
Correct, yep.
So, she was fine with the thirty, but not really taking more than that from other. So, that's why you see it for the undesigned, and again, the tax impact would be zero.
Right, so, everybody understand that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely needs it.
Yeah, oh, it definitely needs replenishment. I'll move that we approve the government buildings article as written.
Second.
Move in second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Road reconstruction.
So, road reconstruction, if you remember that what came to us was six forty.
Yeah.
So, six forty is a new number, higher than what we've been looking at.
Higher than the last year, yep.
So, what we thought we would do is in the road maintenance and reconstruction capital reserve fund, there's a hundred and fifty-six thousand, of which Jason did spend for the hot box.
Yep.
And he spent, you know, to fix Redwood Drive, fix the culvert.
For the culvert, yep.
So, Beth said he probably had like nine thousand dollars, so I thought for easy calculation, if we took the one forty off, because you already have it Then it's five hundred with the anticipated Two six, two eighty-three from the state.
Right.
And then that changed the amount of our taxation, cause if you remember, the last one was twenty-eight cents, this is seventeen cents.
Right, so the plan is, is to utilize that, the money that's in that fund That wasn't utilized last year. So. But to still get to that optimum goal of six forty. So. Any comments, questions from the board?
I move, I move the article forward.
Kevin, you're taking a minute to read it.
Yeah, I'm fine, second.
Okay, move in second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Didn't change the next one.
Yeah, CRF for the tennis court replacement, still looking for twenty thousand for the To establish that fund for the recreational court replacement. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we accept The article for creating a fund for the inevitable replacement of the tennis court At twenty thousand dollars this year, with a tax impact of two cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Move in second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
So, the new Parks and Rec fund, as we received Information for different RSA. Actually, I ran it by Laura, and You can create a revolving fund Which is the right RSA is sitting there. Thought I had a copy of exactly what it said, but changed around a little bit as well. The thought, what was presented was to have the Parks and Rec be the, I'm trying to find the word.
Agents to expend.
Agents to expend, thank you. Those are appointed on the fly by us and just To keep consistent with the rest of our revolving funds, the Board of Selectmen should be the ones, agents to expend. So, that is changed in here as well. Treasure's still gonna have custody, but instead of Parks and Rec Board of Selectmen would be the agents to expend.
Did the park get that memo?
No, I will send it to, I was waiting for Laura to okay it, and then And then
The only, again, I'm just a little confused, cause the last draft I saw from Parks and Rec They did state that any expenditure over five thousand dollars, was the copy I saw, would then need to be approved by us. So, they wanted a certain amount of leeway as far as not having to come here for every Small expenditure. Which, now, in this market, five thousand dollars is a small expenditure. So, I'm just, I just want to make sure this is in fact
Yes and no, I, I would disagree with you on that one.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the way this is written, there's just another version out there.
Yes.
That Parks and Rec.
And I'll share it with them now that Legals reviewed it.
Okay, good, as long as
Yep.
They're on board, right?
Right, I just, like I said, I just, I, I I don't disagree with your five thousand doesn't buy a lot, but it's still more than the purchasing policy.
Yeah, it, and again, this isn't, it was just their verbiage, so I don't believe
And I thought that, I thought it was gonna be, cause this is to take, but I thought that there was a cap on what they were gonna take.
No, I, the five thousand I thought was a cap, I, I quickly read, it's not, it's five thousand was not the cap.
Okay, alright, alright.
Everybody said to you, it looks like they're capping at a five, but it was five to come back to us, that was my mistake.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, you, but you, you, your memory's not wrong, there was a cap at one point.
I thought there was.
Of twenty grand.
In the fund total?
Per year, I think it was.
Oh, I thought it was
I think.
Okay.
But, yeah, I'm relying on memory too, but there was verbiage to that.
I know that there was a cap verbiage somewhere. Whether it was how much you put in, or how much it was gonna cap out at, for a fund amount, I forget, anyways.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we're still on that one, are we gonna move to, push it forward? Yes, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Move in second, it all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
The other one, I did find out we can't do what I wanted to do with side prey money, so this is gonna be left alone.
Okay. Uh, side prey, as written, every year, ten thousand inside the, inside the grounds of the cemeteries. Move that we Approve the article as written. Is there a second, move in second, all in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
The next one, you see every year for the forester for twenty thousand.
Forester for twenty thou, whoa, are you cut off? Oh, there, there, there.
Yeah, no.
Forester get cut off, okay, alright. Town forester for twenty thousand dollars. Again, it's, we've, we've discussed this before at length, as far as what is encompassing the forester services. It's, it's everything, including the gates and grounds and everything like that, so. I'll move to approve the article as written To the warrant, is there a second?
Second.
Move in second, all in favor?
Yes.
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 So, the next one is gonna totally baffle you.
This is, this is the state cleanup, isn't it?
This is a state cleanup, but DRA makes us do it in two articles.
Okay.
So, the first article has to do with the optional Tax credit. And Because the legislator expanded the criteria For this credit to include individuals who have not yet been discharged from service in the armed forces, that's what the first one's about.
Okay.
The second one is for the all-veterans credit.
Yep.
And This also includes veterans, cause veterans have not, so they're the same, but DRA's requiring two articles.
Okay.
They both have to pass, though. Yes.
Yeah. Alright, so
I don't know why DRA's forcing the issue, but DRA's making us do two articles, everybody is.
Alright.
Because if you remember, the first one had only specific conflicts.
Correct.
And now, people that are still serving today evidently didn't get the credit.
Right.
And then we thought if we adopted the all-veterans credit, it included them.
But
But they changed the eligibility for the first one as well, cause it's two different RSAs.
Okay.
So, we need to do it in two different steps, according to DRA. I'm gonna get more information for us and have Laura, cause she's looking for that information as well.
Okay.
Just why we had to do it in two steps.
But DRA says we need to
DRA, we, they're not gonna accept the one, so.
Right.
I gotta kinda make everybody happy.
Right, alright, so I'll move to accept both All veterans, uh, veterans tax credit articles as written, is there a second?
Second.
Move in second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, next one is new.
The next one is new, it does not involve money, so Laura had agreed that if you wanna talk about and entertain it You could do it up until you sign the warrant, that's why you see it now.
Okay.
Which is why Steve is here.
I recognize Chairman Roberts.
We're up to the Board of Fire Awards.
So, my name is Steve Roberts, and I am speaking as an individual tonight, not as a member of the Board of Fire Awards. I just wanna make that clear. That the board has not discussed, voted, or made any recommendations on this issue. So I've served on the Board of Fire Awards for quite a few years. But also, in my experience in the fire service, the state RSA one fifty-four is specifically about organization of fire departments, and it has certain Criteria for the management of the fire departments, and Basically, it offers some suggestions of how that management can be set up. Or actually, management's probably not a good word, oversight. And so One of the options is to elect fire wards, et cetera. And so, in nineteen seventy-eight, the town I believe it was seventy-eight, I, I did some research, and I received this paperwork which says nineteen seventy-eight on it, but it was about that era. And So, it established the board by the vote of the town. And As it says in the article, it was specifically Made up of three members that are members of the fire department, three members from the general public. And then the fire chief, the, the sitting fire chief is automatically on the board. In nineteen seventy-eight, Ware was a, I wasn't here then, but Just starting in the fire service, I know that towns such as this size were primarily volunteer at that time. There may have been some stipend of pay or a possible very small Pay, but it wasn't what's What's kinda prevalent today in the fire service in Ware. Presently, our department makeup is what we call a combination department, where we have full-time people and we have on-call people. And currently, everybody that we have is paid By salary or hourly rate for the time that they're working, which is a competitive wage, it's not just a small stipend. And so In the last few meetings at the board There's been, in my opinion, some conflicts between, or with, some of the members of the board who are on the department. And it appears that people may be biased based on their position, on, you know, what they're looking for. And if, if not, if that's not true, but the appearance of it is certainly there. And so I called out, is, so, let me back up a little bit, I have experience with Departments that have had boards established similar to what we have here. One department in their makeup said that the members of the board could not be on the fire department. Another department said that the members could be on the, well, didn't specify. And on that board, at, at the time that there was issues with that, four out of the five were members of the department. And so, conflicts such as what I'm raising now were, were discovered. And so, an article went forth From the selectmen at that, back then, with that department, that You could not be on the board and be on the department at the same time. And so, two of the members that were, two of the four that were on the board, two of them got off the board and stayed on the department, and the other two Was the opposite, and so That, and then the next year, it, it, they couldn't get enough people to participate, I suppose, so they, they voted to dissolve the board altogether. So, my thing is, so, a few meetings ago, I recognized what I felt were some conflicts in voting Specifically on shift coverage, was, I thought, a pretty serious one, where The person who proposed the shift coverage policy Was a person that would benefit from being able to work those shifts. And then, and the requirements for qualifications to be able to work shifts It appeared that they may be Bending those requirements so that they could be able to work. And again, if, if that's not true, then that's, that's not true, but what I'm saying is that the appearance even of it Is, in my opinion, a conflict. So, approached the town attorney on it. And, and that meeting, I did call, I called it out, and so, members agreed that they shouldn't vote, but that they could participate in the discussion. And so, I, I asked the town attorney for a An opinion on that, and she gave me this statement, which I read to the next meeting. And it says that, I, as I understand, there are two individuals on the Board of Fire Awards who wish to be involved in drafting policies slash job descriptions for positions that they have or want On the department, the question is whether they may legally participate in the creation of these policies. Both have indicated that they understand they shouldn't vote, but they feel they should be able to participate in the discussions. Recusals don't work that way, if an individual has a conflict Such that she or he should not vote on a topic, then she or he should not be involved in the discussions either. So, it seems that since both recognize they shouldn't vote on these issues, they likewise should not participate in the discussions. As for whether there is actually a legal conflict of interest, that is a more nuanced question. There is nothing in the statutes or case law, of which I'm aware, that speaks to this situation. Instead, the case law and statutes, I'm sorry, yes, instead the case law and statutes speak to conflicts when a board is acting In a quasi-dudal capacity Like acting on application, for example, rather than administrative capacity such as setting a policy. In those cases, it is clear that if someone will personally benefit from a decision of the board, that she, he may not participate. Here, two individuals may benefit from policy decisions, but there is no certainty that they will. Nonetheless, I do recommend that they recuse themselves from these topics, because they are hoping to benefit. With that frame in mind, it's easy to argue that they cannot act impartially in the best interest of the town. So, so then, I brought that, I read that, and, and then The subsequent meeting, one of the individuals read a statement that said, "It's not illegal, so I can participate and I can vote, and I'm gonna be doing that." And then another one echoed that same sentiment. Now, to kinda bring some of that into perspective I think, you know, I, I looked at that and I thought, well, say I'm a fire truck salesman. "Well, say I'm a fire truck salesman, and the town's trying to purchase a fire truck." I, I see that, the specific instance that I brought up as, um, if, if I was wanting to sell a fire truck to the town, so I bent the rules so that my truck qualified, and so I was able to participate in that bid, it would be wrong for me to use my position on the board to do so. Um, and so, you know, to make money for myself, um, working a shift is a fairly substantial amount of money today. And so, um, but no matter how much it is, it's, in my book, is still unethical. And, um, so, um, I would recommend that, that we, as a town, and I'm asking, uh, the board to support that by making the change mentioned in the art, proposed article. Um, it basically says, changes from three whom represented the, the, the fire department. I'm sorry, let me back up here. It says, uh, "From seven persons, three of whom are members of the general public, three of whom have represented the fire department and the fire chief, to seven persons, six who are members of the general public and not members of the fire department and the fire chief." So that's the, it's not dissolving the board or, or changing their role. It's simply saying that recognizing, um, conflicts of interest and potential conflicts of interest, or the period, the appearance of conflicts of interest, um, that we serve the town the best way possible.
Can I just have a question for you?
Sure.
Just as a, um, as we go to the seven person, all of which are members of the general public, you know, not members of the fire department, and then fire chief, there's a, and question mark. Why is that question?
Because you're, you're.
You're asking.
You're proposing the question to the town.
They all should have ended in a question mark, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Right. So.
Yeah, but the first one doesn't.
I think she ran it with a semicolon. It's one sentence.
Okay.
Or one question.
Okay.
So, I understand, and I've been kinda following along and watching the meetings.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand your stance on it, I hundred percent do, um, and, and the perception, right? But what I wanna state is, I'm not comfortable with putting this on the warrant article unless the board approves it. Because at this point, in my opinion, this is a petition article. Because it's an individual trying, trying to put it on the warrant. So, if Mr. Cloud wanted to have his driveway resealed, he would need twenty-five signatures to put a petition article on the ballot, exactly like the next one. So if this doesn't have board support, and this is coming from the individual yourself, I, I feel as this needs to come from the board.
Um, so.
Because.
Let me just give you my, my input on that, is that, so I don't, so the case that you gave is that you're asking, an individual is asking something to benefit them. What I am asking is, as a citizen, um, with experience and working within this board for, I don't know how many years, twelve years, eleven, twelve years that I have.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I said in the very beginning, because of my experience serving in other places, that if I see a conflict of interest, I will call it out.
Right.
And, and I see it.
And, and I'm not.
But, but, so I'm not looking to, for anything, you know, for myself, but I'm, I'm looking for the, the best interests of the department. And the other thing too is that, I mean, uh, there's also, I mean, maybe there could be potential legal problems or whatever with some of these things.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, it, I, I think it's your board's responsibility to make sure that things in the town are doing it right. If I brought it up to the board, it probably wouldn't have a chance based on what the votes have been of passing. Four out of the seven members of, of the board are on the department.
I, uh, Steve, I completely, I completely see what's going on. And, and I see, see exactly what you, what you brought forward here. So, that, but again, that would be like me saying, alright, so I'll change the topic. That would be like me saying that, that the town should run nothing but Cummins Engines. That's my opinion. Is it right, wrong, or indifferent? I don't know. But that's my opinion.
I think that's different.
It's, it's non-monetary value, and it's one individual saying it. So, that, that's my thing, is it, this is, this is an individual saying this, and I'm just.
Well, it's also with reviewing the situations with town council, this was her recommendation on, on how to, I mean, Naomi was there. That was her recommendation on how to, uh, basically clean this situation up.
Has this been discussed at the Board of Fire Wars level?
Um, I brought up that that's, that's how things can be changed. There was, when there was discussion on that.
Right. I, I would still wanna see the board's input on that personally, before I approve it onto the, onto the ballot. Just because, and again, no disrespect, I, I completely understand your position. I just, like you said, I, I don't, just because the individual. And it's, the, the board has to act as a board to approve these. And again, these came as, as a board ticket item, all of these, except for this one.
Well, I struggled with, um, should I do a petition warrant article? Because I believe strongly that when you serve on a board and you support the actions of the board, especially publicly, but, and I struggled with this, and I thought that I had passed the deadline for doing a petition warrant article. Um, but I, and I, so I struggled with that personally, very seriously, I mean, losing sleep.
Mm-hmm.
And, but I feel that this is more of a, it, it's, yes, I should support the board, but this is almost like a whistleblower thing. I'm seeing some serious issues here, and, um, and so they need to be called out. So, that's, you know, that's my position.
Okay.
And I, and I just wanna say too that I don't know, you're a member of the fire department. And so, I, I wanna, I hope that your bias may not be, any bias that you may have on this isn't affecting what you're saying.
I, my, my time there is very, very limited, and I still have yet to take a full shift. It's just not, not me.
I'm, I'm not saying that.
No, no.
I'm just saying that this is, you know.
No, no, no. No, I'm not, I'm not, if this was for the DPW or any other department, I'd be saying the same exact thing.
Simply that, there, you know, I hope that that isn't influencing your decision, because.
It's not.
It's, it's easy for that to happen.
It is not.
So.
So.
There are very, very few boards, um, left in the state, there used to be several. And, and this is one of the big reasons, is that as, as things have gone forward, it's more.
Evolved.
Come less from your volunteering from anything to your voting on money issues that impact yourself. So, and, and so, while it was stated that, you know, it wasn't illegal for them to do that, and, and that's what the attorney stated as well, but I'm saying that it's not ethical.
And then, like I said, everything you've said, I don't disagree with.
Okay.
So. Other board members, any input?
No, just that you've inferred that the problem is bigger than this one individual who's a full-time firefighter.
It's not a full-time fire, well, we have one that is a full-time that's on the board, and then, uh, two that are, well, one that's inactive on the call department, one that is active on the call department.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and this isn't the, the sole situation, but that's kind of the, the biggest one that's going on. Um, and to me, it was enough.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't, I don't think I know the gravity of the problem that were, that's here, except that appears to be some. Now, are you the only board, are you the only Board Award member that's having, taking issue with this? Do you have?
I can only speak for myself, sir.
Okay.
Uh, I, you know, I've, so, I don't wanna speak for anybody else.
Okay. Well, I think, just.
So, I, I said, can I just, I mean, I sit down on their meetings now as well. Um, and the, it was n- not on the agenda, but it's other business.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, Steve wasn't there, um, but it was brought up.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, uh, the, one of the inactive and one of the non-members voted no. Um, one non-member, one member voted yes. The full-timer waited, and the chief abstained, which I think is the right thing to do. Because, I mean, like, like, we talked to Laura, it's not illegal.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Um, but had all seven of them been there to vote on a policy, it probably wouldn't have passed.
Right.
Um, and that's, that's just, you know, Laura's looked at the videos too, and that's where the article came from. I'm not swaying anybody, I'm just saying that I've sat in, I sat in with Laura.
Right.
I'll just leave it be.
Right. Again, I just, John, do you have any?
I can see your side, I can see his side.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, 'cause I've been on that side.
Oh, we both have been.
And I, and I, as you have, I have watched the, some of the videos.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I'm leaning more towards what Ricky said, that it needs to come as a petition. Which I know is not gonna do any good this year. The only thing I could add to that is, hopefully we'll have a ethics committee after March.
Mm-hmm.
And if there's ethical, unethical things going on, on that, there's your avenue.
Well, again, I'm gonna state that, it's my opinion that it's your responsibility that if there's issues going on, which it appears that you don't disagree with me, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but based on what you both have just, or based on what you said especially, um, I, I think that it's the selectmen's responsibility to act as best you can, um, when you see something. And, and it's not like you or I or we in this room can make this happen, the voters will have the final say. So that's, that's my opinion.
I can only, um, it's just, it's new to me tonight, really, what's going on, and I have not watched the videos. I don't really understand the scope of the problem, um, short of what you stated as the one issue of a person trying to manipulate a schedule. I just got done with the negotiations, that that's always a question, right? When changes are being made, is it being made to, does someone have an agenda? Um, but without more information than that, I can't really weigh in. I would just double-check it to make sure I didn't miss it. Um, and with, with that, with, with the precedence that before this would have to be a petition article, because it's not coming from a committee or a board, it's coming from an individual.
Naomi, you said we have, 'cause it's non-monetary, when do we have timeline sign?
But the petition.
No, 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 but when do we have the opportunity to sign it?
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth.
Next Monday, gonna sign it.
Okay. Alright.
I mean, he could call a special meeting.
Yeah. I, I just, I, I mean, even if you guys didn't vote on it, I wanna hear the membership, the, the.
Well, if you watch the, if you watch the meetings, you watch, you can see the one where I talked about it.
Yeah.
And then you can see the one where I came in and read this.
Do you have the date?
And then, and then you can, I don't, off, off the top of my head, it's probably like the last three meetings or so. And then you can see the one where one member read a statement saying, "It's not illegal, so I'm gonna do it," and one of the other members echoed that.
Mm-hmm.
And said, "I'm, I'm gonna vote and participate on things for the department." So is it, let me ask you, this is ever a time when you have to recuse yourself on this board?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, well, they basically said, "We're not going to do that." Look at the tape, I'm not gonna put words in anybody's mouth.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
So, as I understand it, we, there's still, we, we can still discuss this before we sign on the thirtieth.
Right.
That, that, I'm, I'm just bringing my case here, as I feel I'm obligated to do so.
Yeah.
Um, so thank you for your time, if you have any more questions.
My apologies if I was.
No, no, no.
I missed this one.
No, no, it.
No, I know, I know, but.
It wasn't on the sixteenth, yeah.
I didn't even, I don't even, I don't even, I wasn't even aware that this situation was ongoing. Otherwise, I would've taken the time to look at the tape.
Okay, thank you for your.
Yeah.
Thanks, Steve.
So you wanna hold on that one for now?
Hold on for now.
Um, the last, Laura did.
I have a question on the, on the, on petition articles.
Yep.
As they're written. So, to see if the town will vote to pave Orchard Hill Road and Appleway.
Okay, what she wrote here.
Yep, no, I, I get, that's exactly what it was.
It's advisory only.
Okay.
Because it does not raise and appropriate any money, and cannot be amended at deliberative session to do so.
That was my question, was how, how do they, how are they, how is it funded?
Advisory only.
How is it funded?
And you can't, as it says here, raise and appropriate any money.
Okay.
And it can't be amended at deliberative session, so it's gonna go on there just like that.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I didn't know, 'cause like you said, there's no money on it, so how are you supposed to?
Nope, the petition article, she was very clear with that, and she'll be there too, so.
Okay, alright, I just, I didn't know, I was.
And the last one is another petition, and written exactly, she didn't have any comment on that, but I think that's one that's probably, and you guys don't put your recommendation on that.
No, neither of them.
Um, and that's one I think that's probably going around to other communities, 'cause it looked like it was very well.
It looks like a very well-written boilerplate stamp.
The one article that we got when we wanted to redraw the lines on the map, it looked like that, so.
Yeah, very well-written.
But you don't recommend either of those.
Right.
So you can go back to your raise one.
Yeah. We, we okay with the CBA one, right? Yes, okay. So we did the.
Yeah, the only one you got left is the non-union pool.
Alright, so, um, the non-union raise pool, um, is, the number that was, this was derived by ninety-eight, two-twenty-five, was five percent to all employees that are not in any collective bargaining agreements. Um, nor is it the town master here, she is not in it either, so. Um, but it has been brought to us multiple years, um, multiple different conversations, I'll say, um, of what five percent looks like to each employee. Um, you know, your, your, your staff that's on the lower end of the pay scale doesn't get, doesn't seem to get a lot of on five percent or three percent in the past, but yet, if you go to the top of the scale, three percent doesn't look too bad. Um, so, I'm not sure exactly, again, we, we put a number together. I know that we, as a board, were working on evaluations, department evaluations, um, department head evaluations, and the department heads were doing evaluations with the new form that we came up with for their employees. Um, so, I don't know how we would word it, I don't know how it would, how we could use a performance-based, um, but, you know, then again, if your top tier is performing as good as your lower tier, this is a moot point. So, I just don't know how to distribute it and come up with a, a correct number. It's been something I've been trying to mull around, but I can't quite come up and make something stick on how to do it. I mean, we, we can do five percent across the board, um, that's what we've done in the past, three percent, two and a half percent, three percent, et cetera. Um, obviously, five is, is, is a little higher, um, it's still lower than the, um, cost of living adjustment by Social Security um, for this year. Um, but, um, as we, we all know, looking at anything out in the open, um, employee retention is huge right now. Um, so we've gotta become competitive. Um, it's a step in the right direction, it's not the solution, but it's a step. Um, so, I, I don't know, I just, I guess I wanted to open this one up for a little more conversation than just as written and move it along.
Well, you make a good point, in, there are certain positions, no matter what the industry or municipality, that, that plateau, they just cap, they don't.
Right.
They, they reach that threshold. So, it, it is unfair if those people that are at that plateau, they've capped,
Mm-hmm.
would continue to get the bump, and the smaller guys are getting wage adjustments, which then would allow them to take a bigger piece of that percentage.
Right.
Right. So the, what's been missing is merit-based pay adjustments.
I would agree.
That we haven't been able to assess because we have not had regular performance evaluations.
Mm-hmm.
And now that we're kicking those in, we should be able to then begin to adjust based on merit, those individuals, but what do we do right now?
Yeah, that's my question, is, is how do you, how do you calculate this number? Because, because we are going down that road, but we're not quite to that point in the road.
Right.
Right, I mean, that's a pretty good term, I guess.
Well, we had, we, you know, as we put this together, the evaluation form this summer, late fall, we had a goal of having those completed in February, but still, I think with all good intentions, but it doesn't, did not allow us the flexibility to do any merit adjustments going into this physical year.
Mm-hmm.
From lack of experience and understanding exactly how these types of budgets work and revolving funds and is there any way to hold some of that and distribute that money in a merit-based type of platform opposed to just the pool three percent or five percent across the board?
I mean, I think there is, isn't there?
Yeah, so Ricky and I've had quite some long conversations on how to do it.
Hmm.
So, you pulled together five percent. So you pulled together 5% of the total payroll for non-union library, right? Out of that, this is my thought, um, we're having a tough time. You've got some highway guys that are under 20. No one's knocking our door down to go plow for us for under 20. I just see that there is a way, and probably be criticized, 'cause I'm not in the pool, but anyway, I think there's a way that we could balance, taking the evaluations, some of the lower ones, bring up a little bit to make it worthwhile. And, you know, some get four. I'm just, I, I just think that, I understand that, but I just, how do you, do you just say, alright, we're gonna do 5%, and then we're gonna try to bring up the, um, the drivers? Particularly, you've got some at 19, 15.
You, you'd almost-
They're out all night.
You'd almost have to do another warrant article like we did in the past of, of just raising their salary hourly.
But then no means no. So you can't do a wage adjustment.
Correct. So you can't do a wage adjustment at all, right.
So I didn't know if, um, between now and next Monday, if you take the 5% and then see what, I mean, John and I started looking, wasn't it you the other day? We were looking at the NHMA wage study. Nobody calls anybody a truck driver anymore. New Boston gets away with calling everybody a heavy equipment operator. And what that does is that bumps you up to the mid twenties. Where if you're a truck driver, you're down in the fifteens and eighteens. I just don't know if, if there's an opportunity to take those. You can do it similar with the, what's around you. And you can do it with population. You could do it a couple of different ways and say, okay. I mean, you've got transportation guys that are 15, 29, part-time.
Yeah. So that was not, so you just brought a good, so is that something that we can try? I mean, I say try. Is that something that can be done and calculated as far as, as far as the wage study? Or is that, how long is that, how long do you think that that would take?
I mean, I would, I would do whatever it took to get it to you from Monday, so you can finish this. But I think you'd have to give me a little bit of, like, is there, you know, these guys that are at, you know, 15, 29, 17, 51, you got a couple of drivers that have been out all night that are making 19, 15. You've got a vacant position for 18, 39.
Yeah.
That's right at the bottom, coming through the door.
Right.
There's just, I mean, you're not gonna get any help, I don't think. I mean, look at what, we had to go in the 20 range-
Right.
-to find people.
Right.
So, so now we, so we have three things. So we have adjusting the base for the truck, the starting salary for a truck driver.
Yeah.
Okay. And like any, you know, to categorize any, any, anybody into a general category, like, they're, they're a truck driver, so they're only worth this amount of money. There are great truck drivers, and there are truck drivers that aren't so great. Okay, there's truck drivers that bring home broken equipment every time they go out, right? So, um, that, there, we have to, we still, I think, we still have to incorporate the merit-based increases to retain those good people. So those good people aren't leaving us because somebody sees that this guy can make the round in, he's, he's, he's running a load, he's, he's running 12 loads a day. The other guy's getting 10 loads a day.
Or four. But I guess let me ask, let me ask this, Kevin, is, would it be worth this year doing a wage study adjustment? And then next year, do a merit-based, because we'll have those in hand coming into the end of the year?
Mine are gonna be done by February 1st.
Right, but you'll, you'll still have those. You'll have those in hand. Would it be more, and of course, February to me is the complete wrong time of year to do it. It should be in October. So we have time to prepare.
But we also didn't-
Right, but, but nothing to say we can't do them again in October, right?
Yeah, absolutely, no.
And then move into next year with a merit-based and say, okay, you know, we have so many fives, we have so many fours, we have so many threes on the percentage, on, on the, on the, you know, on the merit. And you figure, alright, well, five is, is the full 5%, if that's what you wanna call it that year. The fours are 4%, and the threes are 3%. And then that way there, you can calculate another number, but, but to get, like, I think what you're saying is, to get people squared up to where, you know, positions squared up to where we should be within reason. I'm not saying we jump, you know, 100, 100% in a, in a, in a hourly employee. But to get wages somewhat closer, would that be the, the proper way to do this, rather than 5% across the board? I don't know. I just, to me, it was, it was a larger topic, given, given, given the, the labor climate.
Well, the, it takes care of the scenario as you lay it out. It takes care of two of the three problems, situations, issues on the table. So it would, it would get that, we, we'd have to, we have to deal with the cost of living regardless. So it's of some level, right? We can't leave them all sitting. So if we make the adjustment and we run 3% in the pool after the adjustment, if we bump people, I mean, we only, we have, we are gonna have to have a number, right, to work off?
Right.
Well, I'm saying this year, we do, we do a, a wage study adjustment.
Right, plus the five?
No.
Okay, no five.
Within the five.
Within the five.
Okay, cool. That's the same thing I was agreeing to.
Right. So I, I'm thinking, and then, and then next year, 2024, I know we're talking 23, but in 2024-
Have everything done in October?
Have everything in Oc, done in October of 23, moving into it, we can say, okay, we did, we did the wa, we did, we did the performance reviews. You know, you got five out of five. You get whatever this board sets. I'm just using a round number of five, of 5%. But if it was 3%, it would be 3%, right? You get the full amount. You only got four out of five. You only get this. And three out of five, you only get this.
Right. And that makes all kinds of sense, because as we had made a decision, again, for retention back in November, and to help deal with some of the additional costs of transportation, whatever, we increased, for instance, down at DPW, we increased the stipend. And we increased those across the board.
Yeah.
And as we're learning, there's some people that are exceeding
Oh, yeah.
the demand and other people that aren't.
Yeah.
But they're receiving the same stipend.
Right.
That's the whole reason, that's the whole thing with across the board. That's so.
Yeah.
You know, if you just wanna come exist.
That is a downfall.
That's the perfect example why we need the merit-based.
Right. Which I think, I think for, for 24's warrant is gonna be perfect. It's just getting through this one. And I, I would, I would like a wage study style, rather than 5% across the board.
You have to come up with a number for the pool to start with. That's what I said to him. You don't just throw a number out.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah. And this, this may go up, it may go down. I don't know.
Next, in 24?
In 23, for this number. For, for this number, it could be different.
So what do you want me to do is come up with the numbers of, like I said, right around us? 'Cause typically, it's easy to go to an unbutting town.
You said NHMA puts one out too?
Yeah, that's what I showed John. But it, but it's, it's from 25,000 all the way down to 1,000 people. You know what I mean? It's the whole, when you go by job description.
I think you could probably take the, the middle, 'cause we're obviously, if, if, you know-
Yeah, well, you can, they do the population, so you could put the population in there, up to 10,000, and see what you get.
And again, you know, I mean, obviously, you know the positions, as far as what's encompassing the positions. So you can kinda craft what, what it is, per se. You know, 'cause again, you could say admin assistant is what, right? But you know what the roles and responsibilities of, of what we have labeled an admin assistant. It may not be fitting on, say, that site.
I'm just looking at, there's two vacant DPWs for 18, 39.
Yeah, Duncan's is higher at 16.
Right. But you can go to McDonald's and Conner's for 18, 50, and have a 401K and education and a full benefits-
Right.
-to serve a burger.
Not be driving at 2:00 in the morning down Chase Hill.
Right, exactly. So there's just things that, you know, that's-
So, yeah, I think we're all, we're, we're close enough on the details-
Put some together and see what the number looks like.
Yeah.
So that there's, um, let's you for six months from when Jason has, they interim-
Well, I think you said, I think you said February was, was the, was the deadline for this round.
So then, the next, so the next round, the next round, that's six months.
It'll be August.
But let's do August. So we're six months. And he can actually, if he hasn't-
I don't know if he's had time to do his guys.
Exactly. I'm sure he hasn't.
Would it be better for September?
Well, if, if we make August to September his time, so he, yeah, so he has a month to get them to us.
You give him 30 days to, to start in August.
Yes, exactly. But what he can do is he can, well, what I want him to do, I shouldn't say he can do. What I would like him to do is, as he, since this is all new to them. Okay, they've, none of them probably have had a review since they got there. So-
It's been a few years.
Yeah.
Been a few years.
So, what he can, there's, there'll be another review in six months. So there's that out there for them. The incentive to improve.
There's the sticker shock of what, what is this review process? And then it was, okay, now I know what to expect in six months.
You got it. And, and the potential, provided we come up with a solution.
And we're, we're obviously honing in on DPW, 'cause it's probably the easiest department.
Well, and, and I know-
It's boilerplate, but-
Yeah.
We're gonna do it across the town. It's not just a DPW, it's gonna be for everybody.
I was just focusing on-
It's a, it's a major department.
It's right now, we're needing two more drivers.
Yeah.
And they're stretched thin.
It fits the, fits the bill.
But, you know, you've got, I mean, you've got some at the library that are only making $12.
Yeah.
$12.95, $12, $12. And then, um, you know, one of the girls that's been there for a while is only at 15, 41. You know, and then drop down to the guys that are out there in the elements at the transfer station. They're between 15, around 15, 29 is most of them. You know, and they're out there Saturdays, in the weather.
Right.
You know. And that's no benefits. The rest of them have benefits. You know, typically, part-time is a little higher, without benefits.
Without benefits, right. So, alright, yeah, I think, I think that's the route we can take on that one.
So the route you wanna take is, I'll put together a quick study to, for you guys for Monday night. You wanna do that? And then you can finalize your number?
Is there something you maybe give us on Friday? Just, just a rough? Oh, I say, oh, I say, but it's just rough, rough numbers. Rough numbers of, hey, this is, this is what I found for, you know, the highway operator. Here's what it is.
Yep, I can do that. And I would look at others, library.
Just so we know kind of, you know, so I, I, we can say, hey, you know, I'm just, again, I'm using round numbers. You know, the wage study says that, that, that a, the, the-
Operator?
I'll use the state term, highway maintainer.
Right.
Operator.
Right.
Okay, is, um, should be between, you know, 20 and 22.
Yep, they gave ranges, yeah.
Right, 20 to 22.
Yeah.
And here we are at 19 and change, right?
18, 39.
18, 39 to start, right. But we're, we're not gonna be able to pliably jump from 18, 39 to 21.
Right, in one swoop.
In one year. We, there's no way we can, that would be pliable. It'd be love if we could, but I don't think we can. And then, and then, you know, see where, see where, and that, and that's what I mean, is, is what we pay for the position and what, what the survey says should be that position. And then we can, we at the, as a board level can say, alright, here we are. Adjust a little bit and probably on the fly be able to make that number, you know, out fairly quickly.
Yeah, I mean, I can get you something for Friday. You guys can mull around.
And I think the wording can probably change, um, well, no, I don't think the wording has to change.
No, the wording doesn't have to change. You have to be able to explain what it represents.
But I think, but I think a, a wage study is, is very-
Right.
Very viable.
What it represents is basically a 5% pool, some wage adjustment-
Yeah.
-based on reviews.
Right.
You know what I mean? But you can't just say, okay, we're gonna use $100,000 to see where it goes.
No, and that's what I'm saying.
That's why we did a percentage based on what we have today.
Is if we're doing a wage adjustment, maybe we don't do a percentage, especially if they're all going to the plus.
I don't think you're gonna go to the minus.
That's exactly what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I mean, 'cause some people may be 5%, some may be, say, 8, 10, who knows?
That's what we did before.
Right.
And some people may be 2.
Right, exactly. But, but as, as a wage study, to me, it makes, it makes more sense. Everybody gets on a, on a more level playing field to-
Very good stat point.
To the labor climate.
For what Kevin wants next year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which I think is the right way to do things anyways.
Yes.
So, Naomi, why don't, since tomorrow's Wednesday already, if you don't get something to paper, you and Ricky can talk. And then, since we're down to three of us anyway, maybe we can catch up over the weekend. You can fill us in on the rough thing and then my, and then my, and then one at a time. And then Monday evening, we could have something.
Yeah, 'cause you'll just have to be patient while we're upstairs and fix it if you're gonna.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, yeah.
And then I gotta come down and you guys have to sign it, and then I gotta get to the school before midnight and let myself in.
Ricky will talk to us individually. Ricky will get back to you if there's something substantial that needs to be changed.
Yeah.
But I, just because it-
Yeah.
It, it, sometimes it's easier to brainstorm and come up with something, then put pen to paper and try to get it to us all in an email and have us all respond back individually and-
No, 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 I don't want that.
Expedite. And I, I think, again, I'm, I'm not trying to circumvent the, the process of the 5%. I just think it's, it's time that, that we do things a little differently, especially in this labor climate.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I think, I personally believe it's-
You wanna keep the people you got.
I want, it's, it's retainage and, and attraction. And we, huge retainage right now. You know, I mean, it, to me, it was, it was surprising to hear Chief Moore the other night. I had never put the links together until he said, an officer every three and a half months. I had never put those links together. But it was quite, um-
Staggering.
Quite a staggering number to hear, so. Alright, so we're gonna work on that one. I think everything else is, is there?
Yeah, this is just, take one of these, it backs up the fuel. What Beth did was, she gave you 19's, 20's, 21's, 22's consumption. So that you have that. And, and just so, $6, the most we ever paid in 22 for diesel was 581. And what we paid in gas was 379.
It's gonna be close. It's gonna, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tight.
I don't, I mean, you never know what's gonna happen. God only knows.
Right.
But, I mean, Ricky and I went round and round with 550 and 6, but-
Yeah, she said 550. I was like, absolutely no way. Nope, can't do it, sorry.
Said it was gambler.
Yeah.
Well, I was at 575, so.
So I said, alright, I can go with you on 6. But Beth put that together for your information. She's also putting you together books with anything you could want for town meeting, just like she did for this little ring binder. You guys will have RSAs, you'll have revenues, you'll have, um, just, we try to have everything what could get thrown at us, that thrown at us, so.
Yeah, okay.
Does anybody want this?
I have some of those.
It's the fuel usage in our adjustment.
It's the fuel usage versus adjustment versus-
It was the biggest, it was the biggest, everybody commented.
I guess so.
Ben, hi.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually quite interesting.
Right.
Okay.
A big number.
Yeah, that's a big number.
Yeah. At the end of the year, it's still a big number.
It is.
Yep, so, alright, um, I think that wraps up the work session. Any other business?
Yeah, I need a non-public.
Under?
ANC.
ANC, okay.
Actually, before you go that far, I did have other business posted.
Oh, good.
So, um, we have, back a while ago, we appointed Keith Ir for the Piscataqua-
Yes.
Perlack. So here's the nomination form that they've filled out and sent to me, but I need you three to, to sign it for him. You can look at it if you like. And then I just wanted, I wanted, this, so this is, they're starting the hearings, again, at the State House. There's one that I think you really need to take a look at. The immunity protection is returning.
Again?
So just have a look at that. It talks about what it's going to do, which is going to put the state, uh, I'm sorry, the, the local communities, if approved, makes each one of you, plus me probably, is personally liable.
Yeah.
If you don't, um, like, for instance, if you don't, if you forget to call a roll call, vote in public, failure to post, um, the ZBA hearings, failure to approve a welfare request, slippery road during a snowstorm, there's all sorts of things. But I just wanted you to know, it talks about it's gonna dramatically increase the expense to the taxpayers because of the legal, and it's gonna cripple government operations. So I just wanted you to know periodically, this is, this is the next round of what they're talking about. I'll keep you guys, I try to keep my fingers on it. But this is just for you to read, that's all.
Okay.
And then Ricky, you sent around the town report, so we can finish that.
Yep.
Did you guys all read what Rick wrote for the town report?
No. Where did that come from?
He shipped it to everybody.
He shipped it to everybody?
Yeah, I read the first one. I said, ship it to all of them.
Are you sure I did? Maybe I didn't.
No, um, well, I saw it the first time, so.
I know it, it kicked it back to me, but usually it kicks me and you both back, and it did kick both of us.
No, I didn't get anything from you.
Okay, no. I got it from you. Where was it?
Right there. Uh, January, oh, oh, hold on, January 22nd at 1:17 PM.
So that would've been Sunday afternoon.
Board members at where dot ANC I go.
We just got Kevin's working.
I heard. So I, I know it kicked it back to me, but it usually kicks it back to both of, both mine and yours will get kicked every time I send the board members.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know why, but.
What day, Ricky?
Uh, Sunday, at one, one seventeen. Okay, well, I'll try and forward it again. Forward to?
Try individual.
That's what I was going to do.
Try to John J. Osborne at where dot A and G of, and then try KK Helett.
Are you short Comcast?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can take a minute, I mean.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing we, so what we didn't address, we have addressed in our budget, but we did receive an email regarding tools.
Oh.
So we received an email, um, that it's come to the attention, um, that there's a one-time purchase for tools, Mr. Bud. And so, um, I guess, I, I just, Beth and I talked about it, too, is I realized making a separate warrant article, um, but then we run into the same thing of no means no. You can't buy any tools, and right now, you're leasing tools from the mechanic.
Right.
So, um, dropping down the forty, taking off the forty-three thousand dollars, dropping it to fifteen was something to at least each year get us some tools.
Yep, yeah, because we're still way behind. We're still way behind.
Then you can get out of the lease, but we did get an email and I just felt, um,
Yeah.
that we should mention that.
Yep, so I forwarded it to both of your personal emails.
Great.
So hopefully you get it. May I check spam? I got a weird email, so.
Yeah, I just need you to okay it, because, um, I just, I mean, suppose I can wait till Monday. You'll be the last ones.
I'm ready to raise that. So the changes that you made in the operating budget really amount to a total of sixty-nine thousand, five hundred?
Ninety-seven.
Pardon me?
Ninety-seven thousand, five hundred. We have fifteen for salt.
Fifteen, you say?
Forty-three for tools and thirty-nine, five for fuel.
Okay, tools, you took how much out of it?
Forty-three thousand.
Okay.
We left fifteen hundred, fifteen thousand in there.
Forty-three thousand even?
We took out forty-three thousand in tools in the odd way.
And thirty-nine, five is fuel?
With fuel affected DPW fire and transfer station lines.
And so it's spread through.
So it's spread through, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, and then.
Nothing with code enforcement and gas.
And then fifteen thousand for the salt.
Yeah, so to get down, um, under the eight million, we took ninety-seven, ninety-seven, five away.
Okay.
But I'll have, I've got all these for tomorrow night.
Yeah, okay. That's my other question. You're all, still all set for tomorrow night?
I am. Ready to go.
Hopefully we don't get snowed out.
I can almost do it from memory.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure is.
Said, not our customer, not available.
I got it.
Okay, you got it?
Yep.
Oh, you printed it off?
No, no, I just handed it to him.
Oh, I was going to say.
He just got his email.
You got the email, okay.
No, I gave him that, because I printed it so I remember.
Well, I just emailed his personal one and it kicked it back again.
Yeah.
Says not our customer. So.
You have an issue, though, with your, is it iCloud?
We'll have to go make a copy and then give it to him.
Your iCloud bounces back every now and then.
So.
I'll, I'll take care of this and send.
Okay, any other correspondence of business?
Not that I have.
I don't have anything.
Not tonight. Wait till Monday.
Okay.
Yeah.
All set?
I'm okay.
A and C?
A and C.
Good night, Steve.
Okay.
Good night, Steve.
Good night, Steve.
Bye, Frank.
Bye, Frank.
Are you in tomorrow, Naomi?
Yeah, all the way till tomorrow night when the finance committee's going to be.
All right.
Good night, Frank.